The board meeting is called to order. Secretary Pachalkov, will you please read the roll?
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Hamud.
Here.
Trustee Nassar.
Here.
Trustee Mead.
Here.
Trustee Petlicoff here. Trustee Thorpe is absent. Trustee, President Lane.
Here. Before, I think we're going to go through the pledge of allegiance, Dr. Maleko, but then we did want to move up. We have some students here and we really appreciate them coming back after their graduation when they don't really have to be here. So we'll move that up in the agenda.
From the special reports.
From the special reports, yes. So we would like to do right now the pledge of allegiance, so if everyone would rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
You don't give a certificate, I guess.
No, I don't. That's okay. Okay, so do you know where we are then, Secretary Pachalkov?
So, we're just doing, just A out of the special reports?
Um...
It's actually all...
Or do you want to do all of them?
Yes, can we do...
Okay.
And we have the students. Students are here as well, so I would do, I would put it after these presentations, maybe just before citizen participation.
So you want to put what if the...
Oh, the exchange club.
Special reports.
Yeah, because they have recognition.
So are we going to jump down to recognition?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Okay. All right.
Proceed from there, thank you.
So we want to do commendations first?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, recognition and acknowledgements, commendations. And I, oh, David Musted is the...
The reader?
Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Commendations, going to be short and sweet today. Salina Elementary and Salina Intermediate Schools, commendations to Salina Intermediate School on working together with Salina Elementary to raise funds to benefit two charities that provide valuable health education, research, and services to people locally and around the world. Working with student council together, the schools raised a total of over $3,100 for the Junior Diabetes Research Foundation Kids for a Cure. Salina Intermediate raised just over $1,300 and Salina Elementary raised just over $1,800 for the cause. The two classes that raised the most money were Mrs. Yazmeen's and sixth grade class and Ms. Maslay's fifth grade class. Salina Elementary also participated in the annual Jump Rope for Heart, which many of our schools participate, and we often read those commendations throughout the year of the different schools that participate. But this time it was Salina Elementary and they raised $450 for the American Heart Association. The event really raises awareness about health, heart-healthy living and helps fund life-saving scientific research and critical needed education efforts. Want to thank students, family, and staff at Salina Community for their generosity, caring, and teamwork to benefit two great causes. And we also have several commendations that come in late in the year and we'll probably be able to share those with all of you in July as we kind of put those together. Of course, we had all the wonderful graduation ceremonies, not only at the high school but many at the middle schools and elementary schools as well. So big commendations to all of those schools for putting together those events. We appreciate that very much. Thank you.
You know what was really nice also? I'd really like to thank the senior class this year went off with no problems. It was really flawless, so far as I heard, no incidents, and that's...
Yeah, I was going to say, I just had a conversation with a community member today, as a matter of fact, who talked about how in the past, the wild driving that went on and everything, and I said, well, you know, I said, I, we all recognize that there was a time, a period of time when students got a little bit excited at the end of the school year and, but it wasn't safe and their behavior was dangerous. And I said, and the district took a proactive approach to remind students that, you know, if they were found to be doing something, that they wouldn't get to walk for graduation. And people are noticing a distinctive difference in how the end of the school year has developed and they are no longer seeing that kind of behavior and it's in everybody's best interest.
So thank you, seniors.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Exchange Club of Dearborn Academic Excellence Award.
So we have Mr. Buick here and Mr. Corbin and Dr. Mazzara. Your presentation.
He's, he's...
Good evening.
Dr. Mazzara is hiding.
Oh.
He just wants to heckle us.
Is that, that's okay. We're used to that. My name is Harley Corbin. I'm president of the Dearborn Exchange Club. Mr. Michael Buick is the...
President of the foundation.
President of the foundation. So we're glad to be here this evening to present these awards. First, I wish to thank the Board of Education and School District Administration for permitting the Exchange Club to present its academic excellence awards at tonight's meeting to the 2017 valedictorians of Dearborn's three comprehensive high schools. We also want to thank the high school principals and executive director, Dr. Jill Chokel, for their help in establishing this award program. It is greatly appreciated. Exchange Club of Dearborn has been in existence for over 90 years. That's a long time. Throughout these years, the men and women of Exchange have raised funds for many local community programs and projects. Many of the programs are aimed at developing tomorrow's leaders. Exchange Club was actually formed by Henry Ford in 1925. It's my understanding that that's four years before Dearborn actually became a city. So I feel that the Dearborn, or the Exchange Club members probably had a lot to do with that back in those years. This evening's presentation is our latest program, the Exchange Club of Dearborn Academic Excellence Award. The three 2017 valedictorians named by their high schools will be given a one-time $1,500 cash gift to be used for education or any other purpose. The aim of the Academic Excellence Award program is to encourage and reward high scholastic achievement and assist recipients with the cost of furthering their education. It is now my honor to present the $1,500 gift to each of our valedictorians. First, the valedictorian and recipient from Dearborn High, Mr. Hani Alhassan. Our second award for the valedictorian and recipient from Ezell Ford, Mr. Khalid Abdulshafi. The valedictorian and recipient from Fordson High, Mr. Mohammed Hamad.
So we're going to get in a group photo and I just wanted to say I thought that Khalid, Mohammed, and Hani did an excellent job with their speeches at the honors assembly and so congratulations to them. And I really thought that all of them, their personalities came out and they did a wonderful job representing the student population. So congratulations.
President Lane.
Yes.
I also believe that all the awardees' families also, they're all in the audience tonight and this, I know, is a team effort, so congratulations to all of you.
Are the families here? Can they stand? Are the families here? Can they stand up? Any families here? Congratulations.
There's one catch, however. Sometime within the next year, each recipient and the high school representative are to attend a local Exchange Club luncheon as our guests and let our members know how you're doing in the next phase of your education. We will contact the recipients in the months ahead to find a convenient time for them to do so. Again, congratulations to the award recipients and their families, and thank you to the school board and school administration for its help and support. Thank you very much.
The Amicus Scholarship.
I think Mr. Buick's back for that one as well.
We still can't get Dr. Mazzara to come up, though.
My turn again. I don't read so well as I used to without the glasses. The Dearborn Amicus Group is a group of individuals who meet once a month and just raise money and give it to charity. We're not as old as the Exchange Clubs, so our scholarships are only 750, not 1,500. And due to a, our treasurer has been out of town for the last three weeks. We will get the checks to the individuals, but the three recipients are from, Dearborn High is Angie Akkar, who's going to U of M Ann Arbor. From Fordson, Fatima Ali, she'll be attending Michigan State. And from Ezell Ford, Hadi Badun, he'll be attending U of M Dearborn.
So I'd just say thank you to the Exchange Club, Amicus Club, and we have other groups that have been at the board meeting supporting our students with scholarships and scholarship opportunities. I know we've had Rotary and Metro Bureau and other groups that have come and there's multiple within the community, so we appreciate their support. And a lot of us have been at a lot of the organizational scholarship dinners. I know a lot of trustees attend, so it's great that the community does give back to the students who are our future, so thank you.
Should we just finish out this whole section then?
Yep, we may as well.
Acknowledgement of donations?
We have Dr. Mosalem coming up.
Good evening, President Mary Lane, board trustees, Dr. Maleko. So I will be reading the donations to you. We have eight donations for this board meeting. To start, a donation of $3,500 has been offered to Dearborn High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for water distillation. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to River Oaks, Maples, Lindbergh, Hague, Deval, and Bryan School for the Dearborn, from, I apologize, by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for summer reading digital badges. A donation of $513.96 has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for standing desks. A donation of $158.98 has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for mailboxes. A donation of a Koragi xylophone has been offered to Stout Middle School by Mr. Eric Sheed to be used by Stout music teacher Jim Walters. A donation of a didgeridoo, a rain stick, four cow boughs, and two slapsticks has been offered to the music department by Mr. Eric Shea to be used at various schools. A donation of $7,000 worth of plants, shrubs, flowers, and landscaping supplies has been offered to Miller Elementary by Mr. Mahmoud Tanana at Home Depot to be used to plant on the grounds of Miller School. And finally, a donation of $1,500 has been offered to the Early Learning Coalition by Mr. Philip Snap to be used for books for babies. Thank you.
Again, we appreciate, we appreciate the donations of all the donors. Thank you.
Any other? No other? Okay.
So, Secretary Pachalkov, we have some younger members of the audience, so I'd like to jump back to the new board member oath of office.
New board member oath of office. Board member Celia Nassar will take the oath of office at this time administered by Judge Sam Salome. Judge Salome and Celia Nassar will stand and with right hands raised, Judge Salome will ask her to repeat after him the following oath of office.
Have a seat, let me make a couple of comments before you too. I'm going to go out of order for a minute.
We've been going out of order, so that's okay.
Nobody's following anything.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Good evening. Good evening to all of you. And before we commence with the swearing in and the administration of the oath, let me take a second to thank the outgoing trustee, Mary Ambazi, for her services to the Dearborn Community and Dearborn Board of Education and also to collectively wish her luck on her newly appointed position as a judge of the Wayne County Circuit Court. And also let me take this opportunity to, I met up with Amy Blackburn a minute earlier, so I want to thank her for her services to the Dearborn community as well, and I hope that she will do as good for the farming world as she has done for the Dearborn schools. Yeah, I'm sure she will. And as you all know, that education is not confined to gathering students in school buildings and teaching them textbook materials. It is more involved than that. It's an ongoing process of learning and teaching for all of us. And some of these instructions come to us in classrooms, others in the greater school of life. Perhaps the most profound and meaningful human experiences come from that school. We learn that all humans are created equal. We learn about equality, the universal values of liberty, justice, freedom, and in the course of dealing with each other, we learn about democracy. We learn that as humans, we are all connected in the circle of life and that we can debate and discuss and we can agree or disagree, but it has to be within a civilized context. We also learn that you don't have to be wrong for me to be right or vice versa. So tonight I will take this opportunity, and I will tell you that, I profess that I did not follow this latest appointment process or election process in its entirety, but what I've seen, what I've learned, and what I have heard is that it generated great interest and it was a great debate, but unfortunately, at times it was derailed. It became negative, tense, unfriendly. So tonight, I want to take this opportunity to call upon all of us and all of you to come together and to march forward with a sense of responsibility and a sense of community and to purge any residual vestiges of negativity that this process, democratic process, may have generated as an incidental and tangential effect. And never lose sight of the fact that all of our actions and reactions should really be motivated by and designed to serve our students, our Board of Education, our schools, and the greater Dearborn community. So I hope that we can all march forward with a sense of responsibility and sense of community. Thank you very much. And now, it gives me great pleasure and privilege to administer the oath. I will put my robe on and then we'll go. And this is reminiscent of the past. I believe that I, the first oath I administered was for the president, Mary Lane and Amy Blackburn. And if you don't mind, I would like for you, Mary, to join us when I administer the oath. To the right of the newly elected board. I don't have a copy of the oath, but I'll do the oath that I usually do in the courtroom. Can you state your full and complete name for the record?
Celia Christine Nassar.
And Ms. Nassar, can you raise your right hand? Swear or affirm?
I swear and affirm.
That you will?
That I will.
Uphold?
Uphold.
The charter of the city of Dearborn?
The charter of the city of Dearborn.
The constitution of the state of Michigan?
The constitution of the state of Michigan.
The constitution of the United States of America?
The constitution of the United States of America.
And that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of trustee of the Dearborn Board of Education, so help you God. All right? And that you will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge?
Duties?
The duties.
Of the office?
Of the office.
Of trustee?
Of trustee.
Of the city of Dearborn?
Of the city of Dearborn.
Board of Education?
Board of Education.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations. Is there a special oath that you want me to administer in addition to that?
If there is, I can...
Okay. I think we have already done that.
It's pretty much...
Yes. All right. Well, congratulations. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
And we thank you all. We thank you all for all the good work that you do, day in and day out.
Thank you for your...
God bless.
Trustee Nassar, I think you have some family members here? Would you like to?
Yes, my husband, my three boys, Mustafa, Adam, and Ale, and my dad, my aunt is here, and a lot of family, friends, and supporters. I just want to thank Judge Salome and thank you, President Lane, for your leadership. I realize this wasn't an easy process, but I'm committed to be a valuable member of this team. I look forward to learning from each one of my colleagues on the board, and this appointment is a very serious responsibility and I will strive to listen to all and represent every corner of the district. Thank you.
Okay.
Do we want to go to special reports then?
Shall we go now to the student portion?
Special reports, high school graduates.
So I'll call up Ms. Peterson to come up with the students. And then after that, we have Mr. Musted with the graduation highlights. It kind of goes together, so.
Good evening. We have two students to speak. We had three, but one had to leave, so I'm going to call up Laal Mustafa first. Speak about the graduation season.
So first off, I'm sorry because I'm slightly unprepared and also because even though I graduated, you still have to see my face again. After 12 years of my education, I'm proud to say that I am a product of Dearborn Public Schools and I am thankful for that. Dearborn Public Schools has offered me endless opportunities and possibilities to please all of my interests, whether it be the various AP and college courses offered where I was able to pursue and further my education, the athletics where I was able to participate in and strive in, the endless clubs and community services available that helped me further not only my character, but also the character of all those that walked with me the past few weeks ago. Perhaps the most powerful impact Dearborn Public Schools has had on me was not only what they gave me to help me grow academically, but what they gave me in the sense of community that is offered through Dearborn Public Schools. Between the students, the teachers, and administrators, there was always one common goal, students first, which I guess that's why. Students first, exactly. As I go into my life, I will never forget what Dearborn Public Schools has done for me my past 12 years, and I will take with me these tools as I continue to grow. I hope as the years come along, I can give back only a fraction of what you guys gave to me because there's no way I could give it all back. So thank you guys all so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. And our next speaker was a member of our second cohort of the Henry Ford Collegiate Academy. She walked with her class last year, finished her associates at Henry Ford College this year, and received her diploma tonight from us because we know that that's a five-year, six years of education in five years, and she's here to talk about that, and that's Alexis Bear.
Good evening. I would like to start by saying congratulations to all my fellow graduates and thanking the Dearborn Board of Education and Dearborn Public Schools for allowing us to have the amazing opportunity of the Henry Ford Collegiate Academy. Also, a big thank you to Ms. Armstrong, our counselor, who could not be here tonight. She always helped us scheduling our classes, setting up, setting us up with tutors if we needed it, and always keeping us up to date on everything happening on campus, but she also was a listening ear for us when we went to her office to complain about professors or when we got into the college that we've always wanted to go to. The Collegiate Academy was first introduced to us at Dearborn High my freshman year and my mom immediately told me I should do it. She constantly told me to study and get good grades and explore tests so that I would be eligible for the Collegiate Academy. I ended up scoring well enough and did, and so did most of my friends, but I was the only one who took advantage of the opportunity, although they are now regretting it since they, since I have received my associates a year before them and everything is paid for. During my time in the Collegiate Academy, I've made many new friends, learned how to be successful in a college setting, and decided that I want to major in psychology. I also participated in events such as the Middle College National...
Well, as you know, our graduations really start in January with our adult ed classes, and then from there on, it kind of just keeps on rolling. The first ones that we started videotaping were in May, was the early college graduation ceremony, and then Magnet, and our three high schools. Due to the hard work of our video supervisor, Mr. Eric Chig Fry, and his hard-working team of camera people and what have you, but I really want to thank Eric, because when he gets to about this time, I always approve his vacation, and even though he was on vacation, he came back in to make sure all the videos were done and posted. So as of today, all of the graduation videos, the five graduation videos, are posted on YouTube, and you can go there and check them out, our Dearborn Public Schools YouTube channel, and you can check out all the videos there. While Eric was gone, I reached back into my old career in television and put together just a brief little highlights using some photos that were taken of our graduation ceremonies.
You are awesome, David Mustin.
He is. That's true.
And Eric.
Yes.
Superintendent Student Advisory Council?
So we have some of our team here. We're going to present on the Advisory Council. Jasmine, Lael, who you met, Jaslyn, we have Ms. Charles and Ms. Harb, who's here? Come on up, Ms. Harb. And so I just want to kind of talk a little bit about the history of this Advisory Council and where we're at, and it's been really a pleasure to work with the students. And so not all the students are here tonight, but here's the list, and there's 14 students that were on the council, you know, from the different high schools throughout. I know one had initially was on the early college and then transferred over to, had to transfer to Dearborn High, so she represented kind of both for the last two years. Some of them have been on two years. Once they're on the first year, they're automatically included in the second year if they were a junior. And so here's some pictures. You know, we had meetings on a monthly basis, and we did have a lot of pictures, and we, you see the mayor here, we had different guest speakers that came. We also made sure that Dr. Swayden, I know, got into some of the pictures. It was kind of an ongoing joke with her. She didn't really want to get in the camera, but the students would put her up to being part of the team, and it was just kind of a real nice, positive thing that we enjoyed with her in positive humor. And so, so where did this start? It really, you know, goes back to the vision. It really does. Although this vision wasn't yet approved, it was really there. It was there when the Board of Education hired me as superintendent. You know, Students First. I talked about this during my interview. I had heard about different councils that were out there, the National School Board Association. And really, what it, what is it about giving a greater voice? I can tell you, as a principal in the buildings, that's what I stood for as well, was connecting with the students and making sure that they had a voice. Because I think as adults, a lot of times, there's a lot going on in the adult world, and sometimes we just have to sit back and listen to the student ideas, because they really do have some fantastic ideas, and they are our future. And so this is a way to empower them. As mentioned in the interviews, I had it in my 90-day plan as superintendent. It was then in my goals in '15, '16, and '16, '17. I think when we started in '15, '16, we then enhanced some things into '16, the, this past year, and even enhanced what we were doing, including the application process. You always look for things you're going to improve as you go along. It really kind of creates an inner-school council among the high schools. So you know how we get competitive sometimes, Dearborn High, Edsel, and the students can speak to it, but I feel like it really was a way for the students to get, to know who they, each other were, and to kind of talk more as a Dearborn schools, and the great things that were going on in the community, and then the projects that they implemented. So we had, what we did is, what we're planning to do for next year, by the way, and it was their idea, is to expand into the middle school. So we're going to have an advisory council, though that is going to be run, Ms. Charles will lead it up with the three executive directors of student achievement. So I won't necessarily be at every meeting, but I'll be at some of the meetings. But again, that idea came from them, because they said, "Look, you should start this program earlier. It's value, and we want to build leadership skills at the middle school." We also saw Eunice was doing some things, and so the idea came. We had, just so you know, the application was in September, there was a review and acceptance. This year, we did have one student that had to drop out midway, and so what we did, and that had to do with class schedule that they had, they couldn't, they just couldn't handle some of the release time. And so we did appoint, whoops, we appointed Tuktem Al-Badair, and part of the reason I got to appoint her was like halfway through, she did fill out an application, so she was eligible, and she was one of the individuals. And so I just saw her real positive, you know, at the football games at Dearborn High in the field, as she's showing me things and connecting and wants to get those selfie photos with the vision. You know, she, you could just tell she had personality, and she was very persistent. And I know you guys can nod, and you understand what I'm talking about. Just go watch the superintendent happenings in Dearborn schools and listen when her and Lael actually interviewed Mr. Mustin, and you'll understand her personality, I'll tell you that. It really did a great job. So Ms. Charles really did an excellent job coordinating it. What we did is we went to different building for each meeting. We had a couple of meetings here. There was a portion that I would bring some agenda items. Sometimes I'd be in Lansing, and I'd come back with political things that are going on. We had the state representatives that came. But I will tell you, I didn't do, what I learned is I didn't want to do most of the speaking. I wanted to give them an experience. So obviously, when the mayor comes, they want to really hear from the mayor. But what I did is I actually enjoyed more when I sat back and listened to them. And so I didn't try to control that agenda. This was about them and their interaction and the relationships that they built. So we'd always have lunch. This year, we added committee responsibilities. So they were involved in multiple things, and I know they're going to talk about that, so I'm not going to, going to get into that. But I do want to say that it's important for us to, you know, listen to our students at all ages. And so I'm going to turn this over to Jaslyn.
Hi, everyone. First and foremost, I would like to thank Ms. Charles and Ms. Harb for helping me, you know, be on this committee, and I would like to thank you, Dr. Malaco, for your time. It has been a great privilege to be a part of the SSAC, and it really did teach me a lot. And I'm here representing Fortson. And so basically, what, you know, Dr. Malaco was saying with our meetings, we had lunch, you know, we got to talk. He gave us his agenda, what was going on in the Dearborn School public system, which I like, and we got to give our input on it. We also got to talk to him one-on-one, and Ms. Charles one-on-one, about, you know, things that we see going wrong in our school and in our communities, so they can kind of, you know, help it out. And we had great, you know, speakers, such as the mayor, Dr. Masalem, and, you know, everyone else who attended. We got to be a part of the Rotary Club for Youth Month, and we got to meet a lot of great people, make connections. We learned about the purpose of the Rotary Club, and we facilitated the last Rotary meeting and gave a presentation. Also, the Korematsu Day. We participated, we helped out, you know, we handed out flyers, and, you know, it was a great experience. We learned more about the historic event and recognized Fred Korematsu and his actions and what, you know, made the day so important to everyone. So once more, you know, it was really brief and everything, but I thank you, Dr. Malaco, I thank all of you guys, and Ms. Harb, and Dr. Ms. Charles as well. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Jasmine Little, and I would like to start by saying that when I was chosen to be on the Superintendent Student Advisory Council, I was honored, but I was also shy. I was going to be in a group with such influential individuals, so how could I be seen in this group? When I arrived to the first meeting, though, all of that turned around. Dr. Malaco, Mrs. Harb, Ms. Charles, Dr. Warner, Dr. Swayden, and anyone else that was involved, they were such advocates for us as students, and that encouraged me to use my voice even more. Being on SSAC further reinforced my love for social justice, and the things I experienced and had opportunities to be a part of was really amazing, and it opened my eyes. I learned of the inner workings of the school system, and all the historical people around Dearborn, and that I knew very little of, such as Fred Korematsu and Mary Kimido. I'm sorry if I said her name wrong. But this brings me to some of the many projects that we talked about during, that we talked about and that we were active in, in SSAC. One of them, as Jaslyn talked about, was the Rotary Club. As we, we met a lot of people in the community, and I also met the former principal of Edsel Ford High School that I had no idea of, and every time I went to the meeting, he was like, "How's Edsel doing? How are we doing?" And I said, "Oh, we're doing great. We're doing great." And it was just so heartwarming to see all these people coming together for a greater cause, and then passing that down to us as students, so we could pay it forward, in a sense. And also, the happenings in Dearborn, the tapings with Mr. Mustin and Dr. Malaco, and I remember I did one episode with Lael, and it was really interesting. I hadn't, well, I shouldn't say I had no idea that I was going to do it, but it was very, it caught me off-guard a little bit, so I was very, it was on-the-spot kind of deal. And I had to come up with my answers as he was asking questions, and it had to sound very fluent. So it gave experience in being in front of a camera and public speaking, which, which is also another skill that you'll need in real life. So this also not only bettered us as students, but bettered us as people. And also Korematsu Day. Other than learning of Fred Korematsu, we heard the personal experience of Mary Kimido and how she, and how she was in the internment camps, and how her family was affected, how she was personally affected, and how she remembered it, and how she carries on in her day-to-day life, how she carries on in her day-to-day life with those experiences, and how she talks about them and teaches people of Korematsu Day and the importance of it. Overall, I just wanted to say thank you for having me today, and thank you to SSAC for enhancing my experience as a DPS student, and I'll keep this experience and what it taught me close at hand in my journeys through life. Thank you.
For being shy, you just did an amazing job.
Hello again. I was on the Superintendent Advisory Council representing Dearborn High School, and it was my second year, so I guess I was the vet member. I was the old person. One of the best things about the Superintendent Advisory Council is it gave you access to new perspective. I still remember a meeting my junior year, and it was like snowing that day, and all of us were like, "Dr. Malaco, you got to give us a snow day tomorrow." And to us as students, or to parents, well, maybe not parents, but to students, we look at it and we see, "It's snowing, it's cold, let's not go to school." But there's so much more that goes into it, and that's just one example. There's the operators and the financial aspect of it, and we never get to see that. But because of the Advisory Council, we sort of get a background look, and because of that, we were able to go to the students and be like, "It's not that cold, we can go to school, guys."
After he sent several tweets, right?
Yeah. We interrogated him still, don't worry. Another way we had access to new perspectives, specifically this year, was we met with some of the legislators. One of them was State Representative Dr. Humud, was Abdullah Humud, my bad, I'm sorry. And one of the biggest things that that gave us a new perspective too was sort of the requirements for academics. We may be like, "Why do I need to take two years of a language?" But they sort of sat us down and explained all the aspects and sort of all the politics that is going down on the floor. And that was really cool to see, because we have a close ear to Dr. Malaco, and Dr. Malaco has a close ear to them, so our voices weren't just going to the superintendent, it was getting heard on a statewide level. One of the biggest things about the Superintendent Advisory Council that I noticed over my two years on it was the way it brought together the three schools, Dearborn, Edsel, and Fortson. Although we have a rivalry, that's not really a rivalry, because Dearborn High is the best.
[laughing]
We never really saw that when we were together as a council. Specifically, I remember the Real Dearborn March, and because of my position on the Superintendent Advisory Council, I was able to reach out to Jasmine and Dr. Swayden and Dr. Harb, and they were able to get me on that, and that sort of just exemplifies the unity of the Superintendent Advisory Council. The constant theme of unity kind of ended on a great bang when we went to the Images and Perceptions Conference, and that was a great conference. I strongly recommend going, and that sort of just exemplified all the unity and brought it all together. After my two years on the Advisory Council, I want to say thank you, because it genuinely did change me as a person, because it's so easy to look at something and only see the picture. I kind of think about it like a glacier. We see the top of it above the ocean, and it's just a little thing, but we don't see everything under the water and everything that's going on, and that's sort of how it was. As a student, I just saw the top, but being on the Advisory Council, I was able to see everything going on, and because of that, I look at life differently, and I look at Dearborn Public Schools and everything going on differently. So for that, thank you, guys. I'm sad my time is over, but I enjoyed it very much, so thank you for having us on the council.
[applause]
So I'd just like to, you know, thank the board for their support. So I'd just like to, you know, thank the board for their support of this because I know when I did bring it through the 90-day plan, I had a lot of support from the board to move forward, to try it out, and it has been successful. And honestly, I would say, you know, and it's probably one of the things that I'm really proud that we've been able to do. It really is. Of all the things and all my goals that, you know, are very extensive with the strategic plan, I just, you know, there's a lot of great things that people in this district are doing, but this is one of the things that I think is very important. And so I'm proud of the council. I thank Ms. Charles, Ms. Harb, Dr. Swayden, Dr. Warner, and the entire students, and even those that are not here tonight. So thank you. And we did stay in contact, and I know we will because we have a network through WhatsApp. So it wasn't just the meeting time. We were literally communicating throughout the month whenever an issue may arise, and that's how they were communicating too. Thank you, guys. I don't know if there's any questions or...